All right.
Recording in progress.
All right, so we're going to take a roll call vote to open this meeting up. Lori? Laurie Garcia here. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery here.
Mayor Lash Oops, you're on mute.
Mayor Lash Chappell here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. Good evening. So I'm gonna, I guess the first announcement just quickly is that our next meeting is September 12th, and we have a September 12th and 21st, excuse me, September 21st, and an October 12th meeting, and then October 26th. So those are the next three upcoming meetings. This is a fairly short meeting, the reason being it has one item. Many people had concerns, there were a lot of emails, and so we decided to have a meeting with Justice One item so that we could address some of those concerns. And we knew that it was going to be way too long to wait until the 21st. People have just had too much. So I'm going to open the public speak, but here's what I'm going to ask. We have gotten a lot of emails, we read every single one, all of us do. If you, I'm only working on 15 minutes for public speak. So if you have already emailed us, reassure that we have read it. And I want to give an ability for people who haven't had a chance to talk to be able to voice their concerns. So I'm going to open, I'm going to ask, hopefully, for those who have not had a chance to talk yet, and for you to say who you are, and please keep your comments to three minutes. All right, and signal if you would like to talk. I'm not stopping people who have already emailed us, but I just think in fairness, prudent to try to give a chance to speak. I don't see anybody yet. Could you please signal if you want to talk? Ah, Tracy. So Tracy, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. So I have emailed, but nobody raised their hand, so I'll just talk now. Allison, first of all, I want to say thank you for the email that you sent out today. It was really detailed, really informative, it gave a much better picture for what lunch is looking like in practice, so I really appreciate that. And I'd actually love to get more emails like that with that level of detail. I found it really helpful. And I want to say that I read through it, and I really appreciate all the effort that you've made to make lunch safer. I definitely see it's a logistical nightmare, and I really, really appreciate that. I do just want to put on record again that I really feel like we need to follow the science and really need to keep the kids committed to enforcing six feet apart during lunch. And I don't think that it should be left up to the kids to choose. I have a 13-year-old, and he's expressed to me how difficult it is, you know, he's at Whitebrook, to physically distance if other kids aren't, or to make that choice. And he says, you know, it feels uncomfortable, and it feels awkward, and it feels like he's either left out, or so I feel like it shouldn't be up to the kids to make that choice. He ends up coming home feeling stressed and anxious. So I really think the staff needs to be enforcing that safety protocol. He also mentioned to me that some of the, in some of the classrooms, the desks are closer than three feet. One of them they're actually touching. And then again, at recess outdoor time, I really feel like we should commit to the, either to six feet or masks. I prefer masks and just let them play in the playground. But all the science is saying that masks outside are okay when not in a crowd, but kids on a playground is a crowd. And then I wanted to bring up the policy for educating people who are quarantining. We haven't seen anything exactly what it's going to be yet, and I would like to have a written policy where what, whatever that is, whether it's, you know, Google Classrooms, or picking up work, whatever that is, I feel like it should be a written policy so we're all on the same page and know what happens in that instance. Allison, you had mentioned in an email a couple weeks ago that you were talking about it in subcommittee. So I'd like to see what that is. And then I would like to request that whatever that policy is, that we extend it to people who feel the need to self-isolate, whether that's the immunocompromised people, or people who just feel the need to take abundance of caution, like my family. And no, you're all aware that I lost a child to a virus several years back when we were not in a pandemic. It was 48 hours from the onset of symptoms until she was gone. So our comfort level is very, very low, and we've been exercising an abundance of caution to protect our physical health, but also our mental health. I mean, just the level of anxiety we have around it makes it difficult to function. So we are being really, really cautious for that purpose as well. As you know, we ended up having to pull our two unvaccinated daughters out of the system. It broke my heart to do that. They were, you know, they haven't been anywhere in 18 months. They were so excited to go back to school and see their friends and have teachers. But I just didn't feel, I was really disappointed with the response that we got in the amount of time. I was not able to come to something that I felt was comfortable, and so I was forced to pull them because I just didn't trust that they would be safe. And I do want to say that I know East Hampton is doing a lot more than a lot of districts are doing, and I sincerely appreciate that and all the effort that goes into that. I just feel like we could be doing even better and just really following the safest recommendations that we have. I know that they are not required, but I really feel like if we can, we should be following them. And really, that's the six feet when unmasked. And again, if you could just give the most vulnerable the option to keep their kids home so we aren't forced into this choice of sending them when we're terrified and scared and not feeling like they're safe, or pulling out of the East Hampton district. You know, I love East Hampton, I've had wonderful experiences with the school, and I just want you to represent all of us and address all of our concerns because it's only going to make everybody safer. So that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Pilar?
Hi, my name's Ash, and I'm a high school student. And I have a couple of things that I want to say from firsthand experiences from the high school. So while I agree with what the previous speaker just said about how six feet distancing and masks are certainly useful. And I certainly agree that it shouldn't be left up to the students to decide, but that only works when there are actually teachers supervising the students. Like when we're like in EHS, we're all like rushing to our classes, and we're all really tightly packed, and about like 30% of us, like 30% of the students have their masks below their noses. Some like, some don't even have masks on, and they're not being told to put on masks or keep their masks above their noses because there aren't any teachers doing so. And other than the first two days of school, there have been no warnings to students to keep their masks above their noses. There was, like personally, for the classes that I'm in, I've only heard a teacher ask a student to keep their mask above their nose, I think, three times, and that was only on the first and second day. And just today, I saw a student with their mask like practically below their mouth, talking to a teacher, face-to-face with a teacher in the building. And the teacher made no comment on the student having their mask below their mouth. And no one has been following any kind of social distancing. And while I understand that it's difficult during that like rush hour, not rush hour, but like rush to get to classes, that it's difficult to stay even three feet apart, people have been literally touching. And not, because we're all so packed into the high school hallways, there's been no social distancing. And sometimes even in classes, the students' desks are not even three feet apart, or they will be sitting two at a table, and they will gravitate towards each other because they're friends. And so that like, that makes sense, but the teacher isn't saying, "Hey, could you please stay at least three feet apart?" They're like sitting right next to each other. And when students are taken outside to, and told they can have their masks off, I have seen students take off their masks, but then stand really close to each other. Like today during science, people were going around in an activity outside, and they were, at one point, I saw two students, they were no closer than five inches without masks, practically breathing each other's breath. And also today in the locker rooms for gym, there, some students had no masks on and were all tightly packed together. There's no, no teacher in it, and it's, and I'm being, I'm having my grade reduced because I am choosing to be safe and not go in and change because I don't want to be in a small built, a small room with maybe 50 kids or 25 kids tightly packed into the small changing rooms, some without masks, and I'm getting my grade reduced because I'm choosing not to go in there. And it's, it makes me feel really unsafe. Even though I'm fully vaccinated and I'm wearing an airtight mask, I still feel really unsafe, and I, it needs to change. I feel like that from more teacher supervision to students actually being told to have their masks on, it needs to start, especially with new variants that can possibly, yeah, so new variants and all of that, and it just getting worse, the new surges. It's, as a student, it is really frightening to have to go in there every day and be around other people that even while I'm being safe or trying to be, they are not. And it's, it's really unnerving, and it, yeah, so.
Can I say a word? I just, I wanted to say that, you know, learning all of this was really shocking. And I have an autoimmune disease and several other diseases, including a kind of sister disease to long COVID, dysautonomia. And there are kids in that school who are medically fragile, who are at risk of having complicated COVID, or at risk of catching it and bringing it home. And I, you know, I understand there's only three, I guess four now cases, but in June was it? That's all we had for the whole town was four cases. This is not even what the sixth day of school.
Yeah.
It's alarming, and people who are medically fragile are not in the majority, but we are definitely feeling swept under the rug. And I would like the committee to please consider us. I, I had the Special Ed Pack Facebook page, so I hear a lot of stories, and it's frustrating. Thank you.
If I can say one more thing, do I have time?
Go ahead. I don't see anybody else's hand raised.
Okay. So also, just yesterday in health class where there, this is one of the classes where the kids are, kids' desks are maybe this far apart. I heard one student say, "Could you please stay back? I'm not vaccinated," to kids that were kind of converging around him, trying to talk to their friends and stuff. And I know this student, and I know that they are most likely not vaccinated for an actual reason. And hearing that was, also was pretty, I don't know the right word for it, but just shocking to have to hear a student say, "Please stay away from me. I'm not vaccinated." It's frightening.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to close public speak right now, and we're going to open it up and begin with Dr. Leclerc. I notice quite a few principals are here as I'm scrolling through. And so we're going to turn it over to you for a little bit. Dr. Leclerc, hit it.
Thank you. So I'm here just to talk a little bit about our lunch practices tonight. And some of the principals were able to join us. A Friday night meeting, a lot of people have other obligations, so it was, you know, they're here. Some of them are here in case there are questions that arise. But I have personally been to all the buildings to watch lunch on more than one occasion. And I've seen the, and Cindy Kuzensky and I went around on Tuesday of this week, so I showed the chair. I think our lunch practices, I appreciate a comment that Tracy made that, you know, when I speak to colleagues in the area, I think that we are doing a lot really well. And I think that, you know, we're doing the best practices that we can as we get the school year underway. I think I put a pretty comprehensive description in the messaging that went out to families today. You know, there are nuances at each building level based on the outdoor space that they have, based on the way that they'd like students to be spread out in the spaces. The administrators began talking about lunches at the beginning of the summer. So it's not something that is new to them, it's something that's been on their radar. And they, along with myself, have read all the guidance. They have spoken to their custodians, they've measured spaces, they've sought other furniture in some cases to make spaces work appropriately. They've taken over areas of the school building that were not used or being used in different ways. So I think each level has been creative in what they're doing. And I think that they're, you know, continuing to think about the shift that will happen once the cold weather sets in, and they have their plans made for that as well. So I think it's going, I think it's going well at lunch from what I've seen. We posted some pictures on social media the other day at Center in Pepin where the questions or the emails that have been raised to me have been primarily at those buildings. I've received, I would say, less than 10 emails, so I'm trying to put some context around the number of email messages that I've received. And I can't speak for anyone else on the committee as far as how many they've received because sometimes people send things to different folks. But, you know, out of a district of 14, over 1,400 students, I've heard from maybe 10 parents that have had questions about lunch or raised concerns. And I think we've done our best to address them. So I guess I would, I think that you've probably, I can tell you what was in that message that I sent home to families, but I'm assuming that most of you have seen it. So I'm happy to go over it in more detail or answer any questions that you have.
Did you want to show pictures of what, you know, you took the other day?
We posted pictures on social media the other day. They're on the actual school building Facebook pages, so they've been up for a couple days. And as administrators take more pictures, or Jean Libby, our engagement coordinator, our family engagement coordinator goes around, she'll be posting more.
Okay. Mayor, you wanted to say something?
Um, yeah, I do not see the email from today, and I'm not on Facebook. So I just, some of this might be repetitive from the pictures and the email. So I did wonder about students at all grades, if they could not get vaccinated because their age or another medical condition. Was it, were they expected to attend school depending on the severity of their medical condition and not get credit if they don't come to school? Because I know remote's not an option, but is that just for general pop? So that was one question. And then the other is around kid, if there's, is there mask, if there's mask refusal under like age 12, is there a consequence, or not even a consequence, just how are the principals addressing that?
So I'm not sure I can answer either of those questions, they're not on the agenda tonight. I can, I'm happy to answer questions on lunch.
We could talk under other, but for now, let's, let's just stay focused for a few minutes on the lunch protocols.
So. And I can go over the highlights in that message that went out about lunch, Mayor, because I know you didn't have a chance to see it yet, so.
So Mayor, hold on to your thoughts when we go to other before we adjourn.
So some of the highlights that I would emphasize is we used COVID funds to hire an additional lunch monitor at every building this year. And that was to have more supervision on students that were more geographically or physically spaced. We added lunch waves, particularly at the elementary schools. We have five lunch waves at each school. Lunch starts at 11:00 and goes until about 1:20, I'm not sure, 1:20, 1:15, somewhere around there. So we have five lunch waves so that we could decrease the number of students eating at one period of time and consequently being out at recess at one time so that we could lower that number, that threshold. We've purchased, well, we had a lot of yoga mats from last year from our lunch experience, but anything that needed to be replaced, more yoga mats, more picnic tables, we've done things like that where there's been space for picnic tables. The priority has been that students are eating outside at all levels if weather permits. And that looks a little different at each level. At the high school, there are a few students that eat in the cafe area. They're pretty spread out, that's a pretty large space, very high ceilings, good air exchange, but a lot of kids eat out in the back at picnic tables, they eat out in front. You know, we are confined the most by our elementary schools because of the size, so we've been very creative in thinking about how we'll use the spaces once we move fully indoors for lunch. We have our cafeterias, and some, some schools we have, in Maple specifically, we have the hallway outside the cafeteria area. We have tables out there where, we have tables in the cafe area. We're adding yoga mats when kids move in fully into the space so that they can be separated. Kids are eating outside on yoga mats now, they're sitting on the ground. So we don't anticipate there'll be challenges with them doing that in the hall. The custodians are marking six-foot separation so that students know exactly where. They can put a yoga mat down, and then they're easily picked up at the end of lunch. And so those are some of the highlights, Mayor, from, oh, and we added air purifiers because those, a lot of the cafeteria spaces were not used at the end of the school year last year. We had air purifiers already purchased in the classrooms that needed them, but we added air purifiers to match the size of the space for the cafeterias that are being used now. So the air purifiers are running already. And so I'll leave it there in case you have any follow-up questions, Mayor, or anyone else does.
Yeah. Are you focusing? Oh, sorry. No, that's okay, go ahead. I was just going to toss out, before we have questions, if you would like to have me share what I saw when I went on Tuesday, what I liked, what I was concerned about, and if that might help, and then that might generate more questions. Okay, so I bugged Dr. Leclerc, and she arranged time to take me around to all the schools. So at the high school, there's a lot of outdoor eating, front and back, plus the kids are allowed to use yoga mats, that was really good. I will tell you, I'm a big fan of six feet. If you're indoors unmasked, I want you six feet away. So we talked with Principal Evans about how to maximize and push it to that six-week, six-foot distance. Everybody there at the high school has an assigned seat, which makes me really happy. It's better in terms of if somebody does get something, if you're sitting at a table, we can tell where you were and who you were sitting near. At Whitebrook, Principal Belice, she's making everybody go outside, and I love that. The weather's nice, she right now has been 100% outdoors. They're eating lots of different places, but they're out in the fresh air. And she also has a vision of, the cafeteria and the libraries were set up for three feet. And we talked, and all going in the same direction, and we talked about six feet, and she had already figured that one out and already implemented that. So as the weather becomes bad and people have to go inside, she had already worked on pushing everybody to six-foot distancing. At Center Pepin, they do a lot of outdoor lunch. They have five lunches, which I applaud their deciding to put five lunches in. That, that is time-consuming, it's crazy to try to have it happen. Some of the kids have to wait a while to eat, but it does reduce the amount of people who are in a space at the same time. Pepin has a little bit more of a difficulty, so we did some brainstorming on how you can push to six feet when the weather becomes bad and people have to be inside. And I think we have a little bit of time for that. And Dr. Leclerc hopefully can report out on that. I'm asking as one school committee member that I would like six feet when we're indoors and the kids are unmasked eating. And pretty much, we're getting there already. At Maple, they, they did some great brainstorming, things spread out, and were able to find the yoga mats that Dr. Leclerc talked about so that when the weather becomes bad and people are sitting inside, they're going to be able to have it at six feet because they're going to remove the table, the tables, and kids will be sitting with their tray and enjoying their lunch on a yoga mat. And I just thought that was unbelievable. What I also liked, and you know, Dr. Leclerc's talking about these filters. What I also liked, and you know, Dr. Leclerc's talking about these filters. I was thrilled to see HEPA filters in the cafeterias where kids are eating. That's not happening in a lot of schools, I can tell you. And then even in the hallway at Maple, there were kids eating in the hallway, there's HEPA filters there. So wherever kids are unmasked, I'm seeing HEPA filters. And that really was, that made me feel a whole lot better. Nothing is ever going to be perfect, but what I like is the tracking of who's where, the tiny groups that are having lunch in terms of that fifth lunch reduces those numbers quite dramatically. And the same at Maple. So I really applaud all of the thinking that went in. My hope is that they're going to reach six feet everywhere. Meredith has already done that, and my hope is that they're going to be able to do that. Think Maple, you and I talked last night, Dr. Leclerc, and I think Maple is going to reach that six feet. Is that correct? Dr. Leclerc? Am I speaking?
It was either, yeah, I don't know if it's you, Cindy, or me, but you were freezing up a little bit on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I can tell you all the elements.
Do you want me to talk to Maple or?
Yeah, yeah, but I was going to say all the schools can do.
Yeah, I think we're all going to get, Maple's going to get to six feet. I don't know that we're going to remove all the tables because I think it's important to have seating options. But with the yoga mats, with the hallways, with the cafeteria, we're very, we're going to be able to get to six feet for lunch.
Great. Yeah, thank you, because that was my sense. I, I started the day really concerned, and I, I was calmer and calmer and calmer as I saw each school and took notes. It made me feel a lot better. The creativity, I will say, with Dr. Leclerc and the principals, I do want to say, I'm watching people be very, very creative. And really, it's mind-boggling to think just managing five lunches in an elementary school to me is a bravo. So it's never going to be perfect, but I was, I wanted people to know, I've seen it, I've been there, I looked, the principals are really trying, Dr. Leclerc is trying. We're talking about everybody getting to that six-feet measure before everybody comes into the building, and that, that makes me really happy. So that being said, I'll be quiet now. Questions? I know the mayor had questions about lunch, and Lori did. Go ahead, Lori?
Thank you. My hand went up when Dr. Leclerc was talking about Center Peppin because one of the main concerns I haven't heard discussed is the lack of attention that parents were expecting to see at Center Peppin. I didn't know if it wasn't up because of the impending storms. I didn't know if it was a spacing issue or what was going on, but that is one of many concerns. My colleagues did recently receive an email that has 26 points of concern that parents are expressing. They asked me, a group of parents, a similar group to the group that asked a few of us to join in at different times last summer, asked me to meet last minute last night so we could kind of get their concerns all prepared to be able to discuss this evening. They're quite dismayed that this meeting pretty much is focused on just lunches. But I do have to say that the fact that Dr. Leclerc sent out such a detailed email today, I think has already eased many of the concerns of the parents in those 26 different points, although it doesn't touch on everything. So for the parents that are so concerned that they didn't, and also there were many parents, Cindy, that thought they would have a chance for public speak, didn't realize it would end, and a concern that that ended early. So what I hear and what I see really is due to a lack of clear communication. And I know that our district has done more than most districts I know about. And I know that because I sat on the COVID response team, and I was so proud of what we did far above what the CDC and DESI recommended. What's extremely concerning to many families in our district is we have stepped back from being so proactive and not reactive. And we have dwindled the members on that team. Of utmost concern to many, including to myself, is that Megan Harvey is no longer invited to sit on that team. Dr. Leclerc said in the last meeting that our public health nurse helped prepare the plans, but Amy Hart had already left the district. And our community already knows that Megan Harvey stepped up and she is preparing our data weekly. She should be on that team. I believe if she sits on that team, many of the concerns of our constituents, of our families, will be put at ease because they trust Megan, such as I trust Megan. I was quite dismayed at our last meeting that not all of my colleagues agreed that Megan should still be part of this. But I hope now that you realize that she is putting out the data chart, that the whole city of East Hampton is reading, that she should be there. In fact, if she is there, I don't even feel that I need to be there because I trust her explicitly, and I know that everything will be reported by Dr. Leclerc, what is discussed there. So this evening, I am not going to do what the parents asked me to do last night and read through the 26 points of concern. I will say that I listened very carefully to Osh, and I am a high school teacher in another district, as most of you already know. Everything that he said, I see daily in my high school in another district. I am not saying that my colleagues or my administration are intentionally doing things the wrong way, but I do believe that not everybody is as cognizant of the dangers of this Delta variant. I have colleagues that I am extremely close with. When we were setting up our classrooms, I said, we have to be three feet apart, students have to be facing the same way. I had colleagues answer me, well, they can't really communicate that way in Spanish, and they just ignored the regulations. And the administration does walk by and see the desks like that, and now there are many cases in our high school and a lot of contact tracing that has to go on. I heard last night that in our schools, the desks are not all separated. Some are and some aren't. I am not saying that anyone, as I said, is doing this intentionally, but I am asking Dr. Leclerc and the administrators that are on this call to please be extra vigilant because people do not always do the right thing, and it is not intentional. But you have to be on top of them to make sure that they do so we can keep more people safe. Because as I said, Osh described things that I see constantly because I am that one teacher that makes the students put up their mask. I will send them out of my room, and I will report them if they don't. But I do have hall duty, and I can't keep track of all the students that are close together and aren't wearing masks. It happens every single period of the day. So thank you, Osh, for speaking so clearly about what you are seeing. And I am very sorry that you have had negative repercussions because of not wanting to be put in harm's way. And I know we're not supposed to respond directly to people in public speak, but I always admire when a student is so brave to speak up. So thank you. So as getting back to communication, I am not going to read the whole list, but I am going to ask for clarification about that tent. There also was a very good idea. I don't know, Mayor, if you can reach out to the church and ask if teachers could park in the parking lot during the school day so we would have extra space at Center Peppin to set up more tents. That is something that was suggested by many families, and I feel that that is a fabulous idea. I was so happy that Cindy spoke of seeing the HEPA filters because I know that we got many questions about what type of filtration is being used. I didn't know how many HEPA filters were there. So that gets back to the communication. Thank you, Dr. Leclerc, again for sending out more details today. I believe that if I share, if you didn't get it already, the document that the public wanted me to go through one by one tonight, I feel if you read that and you address those concerns clearly, and if what we don't address, we can discuss at our next meeting, I think that we can put many people's minds at ease. One thing, again, from an educator's standpoint that I would like to be clear about, is that any family that feels that they have to be in quarantine or feels that they cannot send their child because of health risks due to COVID at this time, I know that we cannot have remote learning. And as an educator, I am really excited that I don't have to do hybrid this year. It is torture to teach, to teach children that are right in front of you and on the screen. But that being said, we have to do all we can as a district to make sure that our students get the same quality education if they are at home for 10 days as those that are in the building. And I suggest that every teacher has the Google Classroom platform up and running, does not have to have a Google Meet, but has everything that is being done in the classroom posted daily so families can see what's going on. In addition to that, I know I saw Sean on this call. I know how much work teachers are doing. I'm one of you in another district. But I feel the teachers should have built-in time, if students are at home, to be able to have a Google Meet with those students or their parents or any guardian that's at home that is there for 10 days or more with the student that has to be at home to have that contact. I don't want the teachers to do extra during their prep time. I want them to have built-in time to be able to connect with those families. And this is coming from an educator's standpoint. We're away from lunch, I know, but I'm not going to go through the 26 points.
I just want to pull this back. And Lori, I appreciate that we got this list and you went to the meeting, and that was, I got, but I had an open house at my school district, so I couldn't attend. But I want to get back to lunch, and the reason is, I know parents, you're saying parents were upset that we only had one issue tonight. The bulk of the concerns that we got was for lunch, 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 worries about lunch. And there were so many that I began to call each of the, and text each of the school committee members to ask if we could have an extra meeting. The purpose of this meeting was to address those lunch concerns. We just saw this 26 I don't list. So it's impossible to start addressing the items and concerns on that list, one because we just got them, and I don't think everybody's had a chance to read it, but the other is because it's not on tonight's agenda. And it's not on tonight's agenda, not because I didn't care about anybody else's concerns, but because as you read through all of those emails, they're about lunch. They're about lunch outdoors and lunch protocols. So that's what we're trying to address first tonight. So what I'm going to do is just ask that we corral it back to lunch, ask whatever questions we have, then we're going to put that lunch aside and we'll give, you know, the rest of the time, talk about something or other that somebody needs to bring up. But my feeling is that the list that we got and the concerns, one, I'm sure Dr. Leclerc will address them, but two, that is a whole nother meeting. That is a whole nother school committee meeting, and I really would like to have everybody there when we have a meeting like that. I'm very grateful for the people who were able to rearrange their schedule and make it here tonight. So I hope that makes sense. Mayor, did you want to first talk about the lunch? Anybody else to weigh in on those lunch protocols?
I guess on the lunch protocols, to narrow the question, is when we have students who don't wear a mask because of a medical concern at lunch or wear a mask and are at a lunch table assigned with people who might not be vaccinated or might be, you know, breakthrough cases, what's the protocol around that?
Mayor, we've had 100% compliance on mask wearing. I would say the exception would be we have one or two students in our preschool program that because of medical reasons are not able to wear a mask, and there are different lunch circumstances for them.
And when students are sitting in their little pods for lunch, and they have the masks off, are, are they three feet apart or does it depend on the school when they're eating with no masks?
They're at least three feet apart, you know, outside. They're at least three feet apart. You know, they, they may be more, they're putting down their little mats or sitting at their tables all over the place, using buckets, using chairs. So yeah, it's at least three feet apart with their masks off. The ones that are sitting, I've, I saw a few students eating inside over the three days that I observed lunch since the start of school. And I would say that, well, I'll use Maple as an example. Judy has, there could be maybe three or four students at a table. There were maybe one or two, and they were just like at opposite ends of the table. So there were a few kids that yearned to sit in a cafeteria because they haven't done that in almost two years. So they begged Mrs. Avril to sit in a cafeteria and eat lunch, and they're all facing the same direction, so they're not on opposite sides of a table.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Anybody else lunch? Marissa, I think Maren is still here. I'm not sure if he was able to stay. Meredith, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say one thing really quickly. I just wanted to thank publicly our head custodian, Corey Holmes, because without his help and his ideas for, we've been brainstorming all summer, and you know, I text him at 10 o'clock at night and say, how about this, how about that? And he's just been phenomenal, and he's, he's come up with a lot of the ideas. We've moved things around 10 times now, and I just wanted to thank Corey.
Thank you. Yeah, you, you, when I walked in, you ever told me you were already fixing for six feet? I was, I was really impressed. That was, that made me really happy. The filters made me very happy. And the amount of kids eating outside alleviates a concern. But again, mind-boggling for me is the extra lunches. I really, it's not going to be perfect, but, and I'm, and I'm sure given what I saw, I believe that the principals and Dr. Leclerc and all of us will be tweaking these plans all year long. I think that's what people need to know. This is a fluid situation, and it's going to continue to change. We're not going to have all the answers. We're not going to be able to anticipate everything, but I, I feel pretty great about the principals really trying to be so creative in figuring out the safest way to do things. It's not going to please everybody, but they're at least trying. And I did feel much better. Am I going to still bug everybody and keep checking for six feet? Am I going to worry? Absolutely. But I do know that right now, and I'm very proud of this, East Hampton is doing a lot more than many districts. And that, that helps me to know that we're doing our best to keep the, the community safe. And there are going to be other concerns. We are going to have to talk about them at other school committee meetings. But this was, this was the big one. Dr. Leclerc?
I realized I did not address Lori's point. At the beginning of the summer, we discussed as an administrative team tents, and we reviewed what we had, what we needed, what the administrators desired. What is at Center Peppin is what the administration at Center Peppin wanted. They don't want more tents. There's no need to ask to shift the staff to a different parking lot. That's not what administration wants. There is a tent at Center Peppin. It is up, the cover is on, they have what they need. They have chosen to structure their outside area differently, and that was part of, they're using the space that they have to work. And that was part of, they're using the space that they have to work best for them. So I don't, you know, I don't need more tents. They have what they wanted. They could have had more if they desired more, as they did last summer. And they said, no, that's not what we want. We have a different plan for how we want this to work. And so that was effective for them. Meredith at the middle school does not have tents because she has a different plan for how she wants lunch to work. And so the planning has been ongoing. And what is there is there because it's what administrators wanted based on what they felt would be the best plan for their building. And so, you know, I don't need someone else to make a plan there, you know? They don't need me to make the plan for them. They know what works for their building. And as Meredith articulated, you know, they're going back and forth with their custodians and making their spaces work to be effective for them and be fluid for them.
Laurie?
Dr. Leclerc, I just, I was voicing the parents' questions.
Yes, I know you were, and I didn't address it, so.
Right. And it wasn't my plan. And I don't think they want to like make plans over the administration. But they do know the lack of space in those buildings. They do know the current mold problem we're having in one of them to even give us less space. So they were thinking, especially with bad weather coming and with rain, the more tents we have, the more children can be outside eating. So I think it makes total sense to have as many tents as we can. In fact, our chair, Cindy, was one that was just like begging for more tents everywhere last year. And I see it even more dangerous this year because the kid, we have more children in the building eating, and this variant is more contagious. So I don't know why we have fewer tents instead of more tents.
My personal belief has not changed. I would like to see tents so that even if it's sprinkling, you can't have the kids outside without a tent if it's sprinkling, you know? But you can if the tent is, you know, if it's not raining so hard that the tent is offering them shelter. So I think that we should be maximizing our use of tents. I do have a question that did crop up in these emails that we were reading. And that is a concern that if a parent wants their child not to have the option to eat outside, how is that being addressed at each of the schools?
I think that, I won't speak for the administrators, but I think that the administrators are directing the building. They're the managers of that building. So the parent should address a concern directly to the administrator. And the parent should communicate with the child if there's a special plan that they have, just like we've said all along. You know, if you want your child to keep their mask on even when they're outside, as a parent, you should be making that known to your child. I think it is impossible for our administration, who, as you already said, are, you know, overseeing five lunches, to have some kind of list or data about who's going where, when. I think that, you know, that it needs to be the principal decision. And if the student knows what they want to do, if they're given a choice, then they should, they should do what their family has indicated they should do.
If a parent called a principal and said, look, I really need my child to eat outside. I want you just to tell my child that's where they're going to eat every day if it's not raining. Is that not possible?
I really, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. But in a building like Maple, for example, where you have one building administrator that's in charge of the instruction, the student discipline, the lunches, everything, she can't keep that straight. Parents need to inform their children what the, you know, what they want them to do. And, you know, otherwise, they need to give that to the administrator and let the administrator decide. She can't work off a list. It's too much, too much to manage.
Anybody else? Lori?
I know that there are many parents that have volunteered to help at lunch. And I know how hard it would be for an administrator such as Judy to have to work off a list. But maybe if we enabled some of those parent volunteers after they've been quarried to go in and help with that process, it would put more parents' minds at ease with the lunch.
Yeah, I haven't seen a list yet, Lori. I've heard, I've heard that. And the information that was put out by my office is that if parents wanted to volunteer, they would need the quarry. They would need a fingerprint, of course. I'm also requiring proof of vaccination. And so, you know, if any of that comes to fruition, we'll see. And that may shift some of the practices. But again, it's not something that the building principal, I don't want the building principal to have to manage the volunteers. That, that needs to kind of be a, a system that runs on its own to some degree.
From what I've heard, I don't know, Judy, could you get on and tell me? I heard that you really wanted to work with parent volunteers. Is that true?
I do, and I've been talking with Jeanne Libby about it. But as of right now, I don't have a list with anybody on it. So, right now, we're managing it all ourselves. And I agree with Dr. Leclerc. You know, when, I mean, there have been children at Maple that have said they wanted to eat in. And I've kicked them out. I said, now I know your parents want you out, go. But I can't, I can't reassure, like, I can't promise that. And one of the things I've said to the parents at Maple is, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not going to promise something I can't fulfill. And there's no way that I can promise that every child whose parent wants them to eat outside, that I can 100% ensure that every single time. I can right now because I'm making them all eat outside, pretty much. I think we had one child eat inside this week, yesterday. But I'm, yeah, I'm just, because my fourth graders really were pushing to eat in. And so I wasn't having much buy-in with eating out. So I just, I just told them they had to. But there's going to be, there's going to be a day where I have to have them in. And again, if it starts pouring and I have to bring the kids in, I can't be thinking about which, you know, who I'm going to call and who's going to have to eat in the rain. I can't do that. I have to, I have to have the parents at Maple trust me that I will do the right thing. And that's what I need.
Judy, I think they really do trust you. And I want to thank you and all the other administrators on this call. I know how hard you're working. I know how difficult this is. And I, as a school committee member, am not trying to make your lives more difficult by just bringing up the parent volunteers. I'm trying to make your lives easier. So please understand that. And please reach out to me because, as you've seen, there's a certain group that want me to be the voice for these parents. So if administration wants me to help be a liaison, I'm happy to do that. We all need to work together with this. We thought this year was going to be so much easier. We thought that when we said to Dr. Leclerc, you make all the decisions. We're not in a state of emergency anymore. We don't have to worry about it as much as school committee. We never expected that the Delta variant would throw us for a loop like this. So we have to step it up.
We agree with you, Lori. And, you know, I have three paraeducator positions open right now. Finding staffing is a challenge. I would hire more people if I could. I'm trying desperately to hire people right now. So we are doing everything we possibly can and more. But there are realities, you know, when, it's real and it's a challenge. I'm so proud of the Maple staff. The opening was phenomenal. The teachers are happy, the kids are happy. So much is happening great in our schools. And I want people to know that. And I have, I'm thrilled with what has happened. And it's a little discouraging, to be honest, to not be talking about that right now after the opening we had and considering how serious the pandemic still is and how hard people are working. So I just want people to know that.
And Judy, I want to make sure you know, I was not suggesting in any way that you run around with a list telling in each classroom which kid has to eat outside. I'm trying to just figure out, is there a logistical way that we can address some of these parents who very, we want their kids to be outside? I do agree, you tell your children you want them to eat outside. But sometimes a few of the kids need a little bit of a push. That was it. I do not, I know how.
And we do push when we can. And we do, you know, it's the same thing with masks at recess. I know some families want their children to have masks at recess. So if I see them, I remind them. But again, I need to be honest. I can't be everywhere all the time. And I can't ask the teachers to be everywhere all the time. We need to be realistic about what we can do in schools. We are trying and we are accomplishing so much. It's really.
I agree.
But I do want people to trust us. I need people to trust us.
Marissa?
Yeah, you know, I just want to, being aware of what incredible efforts went into our school opening, I'm feeling, you know, really grateful, but also a little, little sorry that we had to bring our administrators in on a Friday night when they should be resting and spending time with their families after all the work that they've just done. So, you know, I think it's just always helpful to reinforce that the school committee shouldn't be the first stop for questions about your own, about individual students' experience at school. And I think my teacher, fellow teachers here on the committee would probably agree. If a family is concerned about something happening in a classroom, the first stop is the teacher. And if that doesn't work, then the next stop is the principal. And then we can, you know, come, come to the superintendent in the school committee. But there's very little that we can enact immediately because we are bound by open meeting law. We are a slow group, we're a committee. So if parents want immediate answers and they want immediate action, really go, you know, trust and go to those teachers and building principals who are the people who are actually on the ground and can do something for their kid the very next day.
Thank you, Marissa. I agree. And that's part of what I was going to say before, before we do leave. Mayor, you have your hand up? No, do you? No, it's my little icon. Dr. Leclerc?
To Marissa's point, I understand from Lori that there's a list. That has not been shared with any of the administrators nor myself. So I'm not sure who would be wanting a response. But, you know, a school committee member shared it with me. But whoever this group is, that I don't know, has not shared anything with any of the administrators nor myself. So I'm not sure where the, where the trust is with that.
Can I explain? This list just came out because it was after the conversation. So I like, because of the conversation, I was taking notes. I was starting to put together a list to see what I could bring up that related to lunch. But a lot of those concerns, I have to tell you, were concerns that parents said they did approach the school administration. They did approach you, and that's why they did. So, Marissa, they weren't jumping over the different levels. Parents know that if they can't get the answers that they're seeking, then they go to the school committee. And I am never jumping over the correct protocol. I have said many times, and I said last night, and I said it tonight already, I am so proud of what this district has done. I know how hard. I even said what Ash said. Nobody is intentionally doing anything. It's just crazy to watch what's going on in these schools because there's so much to be doing now. Teachers and administrators are busy all the time in normal times. We don't have time to breathe or even to go to the restroom. And now we have COVID on top of that. So I am not belittling any administrator nor our superintendent. I am just saying what I said initially, that communication is key. And many people felt better after they read that email. And we need to communicate clearly at every level. And then there will be fewer reasons for parents to come to us at the school committee.
Thank you. Are there any more lunch questions or thoughts? Because I just want to move on to other. We're moving along. And if there's something, somebody feels that they need to get in or discuss, now is the time to do it. So that we're going to put this all on, we're going to put this all on future agendas as needs arise. You know, this is not going away. All these are going to be revisited. So before we, wonder if there's a motion. Lori, are you raising your hand again or was that an accident? Okay. All right, Lori?
I'm excited for another that is in COVID. I tell you this all the time. I'm so excited to say that we are planning our first fall bike, walk, and roll event. Because we can do something healthy during COVID. And it's so easy to do. And we all saw that in the spring, that people were just so excited to do something positive and something healthy. So the Mass Safe Roots to Schools does this in the fall all the time. But I normally sign on for us in the spring. But we're going to be doing it in the fall and the spring. And we're even talking about like a snowshoe event in the winter. So see, we can plan fun things that are COVID-related. So let me tell you. First, we are going forward with a bike rodeo. And Jeff Bag, who works as, he officially is our city planner mayor, is that correct? All right, he's working a lot on this to make the bike rodeo a great event. And we have volunteers in the schools as well. And that's going to be on Saturday, October 2. And if it rains, it's going to be on Sunday, October 3. And that's going to teach kids how to ride safely. And there's going to be different things there. And then also, so that same week, on October 6, the administration didn't say no. I said, tell me if you say no. So I didn't hear any no's. So I said, yes, it's a yes. We're having our first fall event. Okay, so that's the other. I'll have more to share the next meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's really hard for teachers, for parents, for administrators, for school committee members. September is a busy time and the beginning of the school year is crazy. We're all doing 1,000 things at once. So I really appreciate everybody showing up tonight to share their concerns and to listen to, try to keep everything going forward and safe. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'm flicking that.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. And again, thank you. Lori?
Lori Garcia, buenas noches.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Miralash DePell?
Miralash DePell, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
And I think Miren was on and did make it. So, Miren, if you're here.
I'm giving a thumbs up, aye.
Okay, all right. And Cynthia Kuzinski, I'm here, our aye. Everybody have a great Friday night and a great weekend. And I thank you very much. All right, be well.